Okay, September meeting of the area planning commission will come to order. Can I have a profile, please?
Ryan Baker. Tammy Bolin.
Present.
James Christman.
Yes.
John Collette. Jim Crowley. Jeff Ford. Norm Froderman.
Here.
Don Volk.
Here.
John Hanley.
Here.
Marcus Mauer. Debbie May.
Here.
William Verdin.
Here.
Mike Morris. Fred Wilson.
Okay, we do have, I would like to ask everyone to stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. I think everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes and the status report. Are there any corrections or concerns?
Motion approved.
Second.
No favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there anyone here with a couple of comments in the commentary? Okay, the director and assistant director.
Good evening. We had an excellent turnout at the presentation we gave to the Terre Haute Area Realtors Association the other day. Something like seventy various community members all involved in the realty or with the Realtors, excuse me, all showed up to listen to what we had to say. These slides for which were entered as a part of our directors and assistant directors report, so you'll have an opportunity to kind of thumb through and get the Cliff Notes of what it was that we did. This was an excellent opportunity for community outreach for our office and hopefully we'll be able to do something similar to this in the near future. Organizational notes, we have November, we will be having a guest speaker. I had had some questions posed by a number of you about various things happening within the community, so I invited a speaker for our November meeting, which will be the second Wednesday of that month. So we'll put him on the agenda. I'm sure you guys will all know who that is. I have confirmed and I believe he will be here. And I don't, I think we might have to move some things around now that I'm thinking about it. But anyway, you guys will recognize him once you get here. He'll be a guest speaker for us. And again, the meeting in November was the second Wednesday of the month. Move back if necessary.
I don't have too much to add. Jared, like I said, Jared has all of our slides for presentations. If you have any questions or even want to see it, I can send those to you as well. And we did also get a first report back from FEMA regarding the Thompson ditch letter mathematically situation. And I can send that to you as well. It seems a little more complicated than everyone originally thought.
So can you translate that into easy language like, is that coming together fairly quick?
There's going to be quite a bit of work that's going to have to be done before it's going to be accepted.
Okay. Yeah, who does?
I don't know who's going to end up having to do it. There's some road crossings, railroad issues.
Outfalls.
There's at least ten outfalls that have been identified. There's going to be quite a bit of technical work that's going to have to be fixed before they will accept that. So it's looking to be a lot more difficult.
So it doesn't follow in Penny Creek Conservancy District?
I don't know who it falls on. To be honest, I don't know who would have to absorb that work.
Okay. I was supposed to get basically the Penny Creek area down Thompson ditch area out of flood plain.
Or considered levy protected.
So you don't have to buy flood insurance and pay it by creep. That sort of thing. Is that actually the way to say it?
Yeah, I can see why they had the flood plain before, then put Thompson ditch, you know?
Well, don't let Thompson ditch, it's just that area. Anything else?
Like I said, if you want the detailed letter, I can give you a copy of that.
I think I'd like to see it.
Sure.
Bring it on.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Any questions for the commission? Okay, do I have a motion? A motion for approval?
Second.
Favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any other communications that did I? Okay, the first item is docket number fifty-four, file twenty-two, Southern Acres West.
We believe that this, they intended for this to be tabled again this month.
So move. Second.
Favor, aye?
Aye.
We have those two other variances. Do you want to hear them all combined?
So are we going to hear it?
No.
No. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and I think it passed?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, the next item is Center City rezoning, docket number fifty-nine, special ordinance twenty-two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three thirty-five East Margaret Avenue, Terre Haute, from an R-one planned development to a C-one neighborhood commerce district.
The property owner, our property owners are James and Alexandra Spital. Excuse me if I'm not saying that correctly. Proposed use, investment business. Proposed zoning is C-one neighborhood commerce district. Current zoning is R-one PD, single-family residence, planned development. It is located on the south side of East Margaret. Common address is twenty-three thirty-five East Margaret Avenue. This area is well-served by utilities. It is C-one to the north, C-two and C-three to the east, C-three to the south, and C-five to the west. The property was rezoned R-one PD for a daycare center in two thousand and six. The petitioners are requesting to rezone to C-one for an investment brokerage office. Rezoning to commercial would be in character for the neighborhood if all surrounding uses are commercial. There appears to be hard surface parking on the property, but the petitioners did not say how many parking spaces are available. According to city code, an office business or professional use requires three spaces per one thousand square feet of gross floor area. A portion of the parking is in the right-of-way. Parking will need to be approved by city engineering. Staff offers a favorable recommendation with the following conditions: approval of a parking plan by city engineer.
Okay, is the petitioner present? Anything you'd like to add or any questions?
We spoke to Marcus and we're fine with whatever parking we have to accommodate.
Any questions? Anyone speaking in opposition of this petition?
I move for approval.
Second.
Favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next item is docket number sixty, special ordinance twenty-three two thousand twenty-two, six oh two South Seventh Street, Terre Haute, from an R-two to an R-three general residence district.
The property owner is JGS LLC. Proposed use is a bed and breakfast. Proposed zoning is R-three general residence district, R-two. Current zoning is R-two, two-family residence districts, represented by Mr. Britton. Is located at six oh two South Seventh Street. And is located in a historic district. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the property to R-three general resident, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I missed the surrounding zonings. The north is R-two PD, east R-two, south R-two, and west R-three. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the property to R-three general residence district for the purpose of a bed and breakfast and five guest rooms, one of which may serve as a residence slash office for the manager. Bed and breakfast isn't listed, isn't a listed use by right in any category. Rather listed in the R-three is apartment hotels or lodging houses and tourist homes, both of which parallel the intended use. The site plan also shows north garage apartments and south amenity and apartment. The site plan does not show how many apartments or the square footage of each dwelling unit. It would need to be determined whether or not the apartments meet the required requirements or a variance would need to be granted. This also applies to minimum lot size, which depends on the number of dwelling units. Parking must be hard surfaced and the parking lot must be illuminated. The site plan does not show the number of parking spaces, so it is unclear if it meets requirements. The property spans several lots, the lots may need to be combined. In the recommendations, city engineering states that a bed and breakfast would not significantly alter the neighborhood characteristic since the capacity is set to five rooms. The property has existing off-street parking, which will not restrict parking along Seventh Street. The rezoning of the property would not create an unjust burden to surrounding properties. Staff offers a favorable recommendation with the following conditions: site plan approval, including number and square footage of apartments and parking by city engineering. Any required variance is approved by the Terre Haute Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Britton is here representing petitioner.
President. Commission for the opportunity to discuss this rezoning with you. Some of you may remember this property as the Thomas, as the Ryan Funeral Home or the Ryan Maddox Funeral Home. Mr. Gedrick purchased this property in two thousand and seventeen and has been working steadily to restore the property by removing many of the additions which were constructed in connection with its use as a funeral home. The house was originally constructed by Luther Hager, an ice merchant, in the eighteen-seventies. Frederick Goldsmith purchased the house in nineteen oh seven and made some additions. As a funeral home, the property was considered as a legal non-conforming use. Mr. Gedrick, as noted by the staff, plans to use the property as a bed and breakfast with five rooms, four rooms in the principal building for up to eight guests, an apartment in the back which may ultimately be used for a manager's residence or a guest room. The guest rooms are all located on the second floor. Each guest room has its own bath. The first floor will be occupied by common areas including sitting rooms, dining room, and a kitchen. The interior is being carefully restored by Mr. Gedrick and right down to the woodwork from the original structure being replicated where any new woodwork is needed. Once restoration is complete, the building will be beautifully restored. Handout has these photographs, but just to help guide through them. This is a current picture of the property. As you can see, there's still a little bit of work to be done. Just finish those out. Sign. Sign. Concerning the rezoning. The next page shows a photograph of the property pre-demolition. And you can see there was a large oak chair on the left and then viewing room, et cetera, on the right. The aerial photograph below that, I included to give you an idea of some of the extensive work done on this property already. The areas that show up as photographed in white have been removed. Those were primarily. Even the area up here, past that garage, that's been removed. In fact, half of the garage was located right here on the photograph, has also been removed. Big empty car garage here. The next pair of photographs are aerial views showing site. And as you can see, it's a very large site. Starts all the way over here and extends all the way to here where that white car is. So it encompasses several lots. This view down here shows it as well. At the bottom of this picture, you see a fairly large blacktop area. That will be parking, or at least some empty space there. This area over here is also currently vacant. The plan is to remove that vacant and create a landscape, empty space, and that is. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer. If there aren't, I'm sure Mr. Gedrick can. We would ask that you pass this along with a favorable recommendation to the city council for their consideration tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, any questions? Anyone speak?
I'm sorry. So this has three parcels of land with him.
There are three parcels, I don't know how many lots that is. I think there's probably at least six or seven city lots in those three parcels.
Okay, is there anyone speaking in opposition to petition? I move for a favor for recommendation.
My second.
No favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is docket number sixty-one, special ordinance twenty-four two thousand twenty-two, three thousand, Fenwood Avenue, Terre Haute, from an M-two to an R-one, single-family residence district.
The property owners are Randall and Peggy Kidd. Proposed use is a single-family residence. Proposed zoning R-one, single-family residence district. Current zoning is M-two, heavy industrial district. The property is on the corner of Fenwood Avenue and Ashland Avenue at three thousand Fenwood Avenue. It is a neighborhood conservation district. It has M-two to the north, east and west, and R-one to the south. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the property from M-two, heavy industrial district to R-one, single-family residence district. The property was originally zoned M-two due to the proximity of the property owned by Public Service Company of Indiana. Several homes surrounding the Duke Energy property are zoned M-two despite being single-family homes. The property has only been utilized as a single-family home. Petitioner is requesting to rezone in order to be able to sell the property and for the continued use as a single-family residence. Non-industrial encroachment into industrial areas is one of the significant problems associated with the existing industrial parks. Therefore, the planning in the areas adjacent to existing industrial parks and the location of the new industrial parks are very important in the relationship between land use and economic development. Existing industrial parks need to be protected from encroachment by residential and retail uses through zoning and buffering. This retains the economic viability of the industrial parks for what they are intended to be used for and minimizes complaints from non-industrial neighbors. Increasing the buffering required between industrial and non-industrial uses bid against problems where the uses are adjacent. A nearby property was rezoned in March two thousand and twenty-two for the same reason. Based upon a precedence that was set by docket number thirteen, special ordinance one sixteen, implying that the developer of the requested rezoning would incur hardship. Staff offers a favorable recommendation for this rezoning with the following conditions: The petitioner must submit a statement where he agrees to the required buffer yard and ongoing use. It must be attached to the de-title or legal description and remain with the property.
Okay, is petitioner present? Favor.
Yes.
Is there anything you need to add or any questions?
No, the only reason I would like to have it rezoned is for sale purposes only. M-two is not going to be accepted by any veterans alone, so I need to have it rezoned.
Okay. Any question? Planning commission? Anyone speaking in opposition?
I move for approval.
Second.
Favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item is docket number sixty-two, special ordinance twenty-five twenty-two, nineteen thirty South Center Street, Terre Haute, Indiana, from an R-one to an R-one planned development.
The owner is Brian's Investments LLC, represented by Mr. Shagley. Proposed use is a Botox center. Proposed zoning is R-one planned development, single-family residence planned development. Current zoning is R-one, single-family residence district. It's located at nineteen thirty South Center Street. It's located in a neighborhood enhancement area. It has R-one to the northeast, north, east, south, and west. Planned developments are uses that may be permitted under certain circumstances that are not a permitted use in the zone district where said planned development is proposed. Planned development is a floating zone. Before a planned development can be considered, the petitioner must show proof of one of the following unique circumstances: that the petitioner had the hardship due to the physical characteristics of the land, hardship due to the improvements in the land, hardship due to adjacent scattered and infallible uses, hardship due to the general deterioration of the neighborhood, or a parcel located near district boundary lines. When it is determined by the area planning commission and the city council that a hardship does exist, a planned development of certain uses may be approved for any zone law. However, it must be determined that said proposed uses, if approved, will be in the public's interest and that substantial justice will be done for the neighborhood. Approval of said proposed uses shall not have the intent of nullifying the purpose of the zoning regulation. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the property to R-one PD for a Botox center. They are planning to repurpose the existing home. The petitioner is requesting two variances from city code, a variance from section ten dash one thirteen A-one for zero setbacks and ten dash one thirteen A-two for no requirements beyond the existing parking. The existing house does not meet setback requirements and there is a garage or shed in the northeast corner that does not meet interior lot line setbacks. The amount of existing parking was not indicated on the site plan. City engineering gave the rezoning an unfavorable recommendation. On their recommendation, they noted that rezoning the property would create an unjust burden to the surrounding properties by being a commercial use in a heavily residential area. The lack of required off-street parking requirements would also create an unjust burden onto the neighborhood. It could be argued that the nature of the business allows for customers by appointment only so that the amount of traffic would be minimal. In keeping with the recommendations forwarded to us by the city and echoing similar concerns, staff gives an unfavorable recommendation. If a favorable recommendation is given, the following conditions are suggested: must be recorded within ninety days and a hardship must be demonstrated.
Mr. President, fellow members of the commission, my name is Richard Shagley. I'm an attorney at rights, Shagley and Lowry, and tonight I'm here on behalf of Brian's Investment LLC. They're the petition this evening and it's a rezoning. They're here tonight asking that the property located at nineteen thirty South Center Street be rezoned from R-one to R-one planned development. And as you all know, that the R-one planned development, the purpose of that is if this no longer is used for this use, we're asking for tonight, it reverts back to the R-one. It's a way of protecting the neighborhood, which is beneficial, I think, to everybody involved. The, we believe the hardships, they do exist. I took some time today and drove that area. A practice I do before all the rezon, just to kind of get a feel, a feel of the area. And I think, although I don't want to, I think I could stand up here and make a pretty good argument about deteriorating neighborhood. But I, but like I said, I would rather focus on the fact that there's mixed use. And in that area, there's a little bit of everything. You don't have to go very far to get commercial, you don't have to go very far to get into other planned developments. And as a result, we feel like we meet the hardship aspects of this planned development. As far as a good use, I'm not too sure as far as a business and a home in this type of area, a Botox clinic, I don't think you could beat that as far as a good neighbor. It's going to have limited hours. It's by appointment only. This is a situation where they're going to have a huge lighted sign hoping for walk-by traffic. This is a destination where someone wants to come. They currently have a place on Fourth Street. That's why they're looking at this place as an owner. You know, it's not a nighttime business. It's not a, at most, there'll be two employees and a customer, maybe a customer in waiting, which we believe results in little parking impact. I should apologize, I will apologize. The site plan submitted was not ideal. Looking at this evening, it didn't, you'd have to look at the proposed parking that we did in this and we're proposing this matter. We believe there's ample parking. There's currently a garage that either the two employees could park in with enough space for four to six cars. Worst-case scenario, you could park on the street, but we believe there's enough off-street parking to satisfy this. We're not, I've not had the opportunity to speak with the person who wrote the recommendation from the city. But, you know, one of the issues is, I'm not too sure exactly when the city code was written, but I'm not too sure they took into, I couldn't find anywhere in our code that dealt with specifically Botox centers. It's kind of a unique, newer thing. Although it's been around for a while, it's not as common. And a result, the workings of a Botox center may not have been known to the city engineer who worked on this. Unfortunately, like I said, I didn't have an opportunity to speak to him. But we believe that this isn't going to be harmful to the neighborhood. We believe we meet the hardship. And as a result, we're here tonight asking for this property to be rezoned from R-one to R-one planned development. I will point out that if you look at the third page, at the fourth page of the staff report, when it discusses what this city engineer wrote, they say, and I quote, "The lack of required off-street parking requirements would also create an unjust burden onto the neighborhood." As I previously indicated, I think there is, I believe there's more than ample parking in this situation. And as a result, we do not believe that will create any parking burden in this area. So although I'm not sure, like I said, unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to speak to this engineer, I was not aware of his comments until yesterday. But again, we would please ask for a recommendation to the city council tomorrow night, a favorable recommendation for this be rezoned from R-one to R-one planned development. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Shagley, so as a commission, we take our heads up from the area planning board and the people that tell us whether or not we should pass this kind of rezoning. And both, two different people, the city engineer and the planning board, both said no. So, I mean, as far as I'm looking forward to say, I'm not looking forward, I'm looking towards saying no just for the sheer reason the people we pay, actually pay a salary to, to tell us what we should do, said no. I mean, how do I overcome that?
You could ask them, would they, do they still believe that after hearing? Because I've had an opportunity to speak with the area planning office once I reviewed the recommendation. You could ask them tonight, would they still stand by their unfavorable recommendation?
You still stand by your unfavorable recommendation?
I'm going to say yes.
Let me justify something. I grew up, I lived at twenty thirty South Sixth, which is a block south of that. You know, I mean, right there by the middlers, you know, and so I don't think it's a blight neighborhood, not yet. I know it needs help, but I'm still putting a Botox center in the middle of that block would have made me very happy if I was there, just saying.
Our recommendation is based on what city engineering stated. There are, with any sort of use, there are impacts beyond the obvious. In researching this, I learned about a thing called Botox parties. So there's a possibility that you have an event where you have more than one or two people coming. Through our experiences with these sorts of centers, even though this is a planned development, it does very specifically state that this is the only thing it can be used for. Memories are short and Botox centers become hair salons, become beauty studios, become anything related to beautification. And where once was one or two cars, perhaps parking on a street, now you have some. So again, this is a planned development, it says that that is not permitted, they would have to rezone it should they need to. But again, memories are short. City engineering is aware that there's limited on-street parking at that location. What little on-street parking is available would create a hardship for motorists in that area. So they forwarded to us their opinion and we echo their stance. So they forwarded to us their opinion, and we echo their stance.
I would, this isn't a, if this was a house that was not on a corner, I could, I would, I could almost go along with that logic, but this is a house on the corner where you have, in theory, you've got more parking than anybody else curbside than on the block. But again, based upon code, they've got plenty of parking off-street. So, and I'd hate to, I'd hate to set the precedent of where we're not going to, we're going to be fearful of what might happen if someone doesn't follow, do what they said. I think that's a slippery slope of, we're, I don't, it just doesn't, it, I always worry about precedent, and that's a weird precedent to set, that, well, they may do something down the road that's not right. I think that's, you've got to believe when they're here that they're going to do what they say, and if they don't, there's ways of fixing that. And we all know that area, and that area is one that we'll watch. So I think you have safeguards in place. I don't think this would be the safeguard, this board, this commission should be the safeguard and people that might not follow the rules, if that makes sense. We're here to determine if they meet the hardship requirements, if it's a good use, not determine, well, what if they, what if they don't follow the rules down the road? Then why would we rezonate anything?
I mean, I agree with you. I think you've got to look at this in the sense that they are going to follow the rules, we have an ability to do something if they don't. Am I not correct?
Yeah, I mean, and again, it is a plan development. They are permitted to only do what they say they're going to do, otherwise they have to come in and rezonate.
I mean, you know, because, you know, I've heard a lot of people concerned about noise and this and that and the other, and I always kind of refer to what the city ordinance is on noise, and there's stopgap measure there that says it's only going to get this bad or this kind of thing, so. And, you know, on Center Street, and corner lots give you lots of parking, and if, you know, I'm just hard-pressed to find something that could get so outrageously out of line, having lived in that neighborhood in the fraternity district in the heyday, that is just so unbearable you can't stand this. I mean, you've got to kind of tolerate a little bit, too. Peaceful enjoyment, I guess, when it gets down to, but anyway, that's just an able comment, I think. I agree with counsel. You have to look at it as they're going to do what they're going to do, and if they don't do what they're going to do, we're going to do what we're supposed to do, so.
I would agree with Mr. Wilson.
Any other questions, comments?
Richard, is there any opposition to parking off the alley? It looks like the city will deal with space there, so petitioner...
Yeah, the plan is, if you, I don't know if you've been by the property, but there was a fence that has been removed, and the plan is to create parking in the back section. So you don't necessarily have to back into the alley, but that you can pull it in and park. They're easily going to meet the parking requirements for this. Like I said, they're only going to need on a big day four spots. They have a garage that they keep, will keep two cars. If they decide to take that down, then there's plenty of room for off-street parking.
Off-street parking, off-street parking.
Oh, sorry, off-street parking, off-street parking.
Thank you.
Okay, any other kind of questions? Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
Down Stanish, I live at 1920 South Center, directly next to the property. Had a couple of things about his thing, deteriorating neighborhood. Once, not too long ago, I would agree with him. However, over the last year, we had a daycare that was rundown, is no longer there, is getting redone, looks great. That property, before they purchased it, was made, looks great. The house across the street from this one has recently been redone, looks great. The neighborhood, that block, is really looking great. We have, we have a 20-month-old little girl, I know, on the corner across the street. They have several children, I think four. Directly across from me, they have a little one on the way. I hope I was able to say that. And I know down on the other corner, they have a little baby. So it is a booming, new, good-looking neighborhood. It's not deteriorating, it's going the opposite direction. As far as parking is concerned, no. So first of all, on Center Street, directly in front of that property, the corner has been marked off for no parking. So there's a good one or two spaces worth that you can't use already, which I'm sure can be changed. I don't know why it's that way. I think it had something to do with the last resident was handicapped and needed something like that. So there's already limited parking with the amount of people that live on that street. Sometimes I have to park way down already. Yes, there's parking on the other side, but it's a sloped hill, and no one ever parks there. Hypothetically, yes, all of the people going to this place could park on that side, sure. But who's going to park on a side street that's on a severe slope when you could park right in front of the door where all the other houses are? So if I talk to some other neighbors, parking is a big concern, but he's right, there is a garage in the back, and there's plenty of land in the back. If you got rid of that garage and cleared out some of that land and made a parking area back there, I know that would make a lot of people in the neighborhood a lot happier and a lot easier to deal with this new business coming in. If you want to respond to that, I have a couple of things. They're going to, they are going to, or are they thinking about it? Because those are different things.
People aren't about to support this spend and effort.
Okay, I know that will make a lot of people around happy. I've noticed you guys doing a great job making it look great, and we're all thrilled about that. But parking is a big concern already, and that is a thing, deteriorating neighborhood is not accurate. And then the last concern about all this is, I give Botox for migraines. I know what it is, I know how expensive it is. So I'm not expecting any kind of, you know, shady clientele or anything like that, so it's good people coming. The problem is, I'm concerned about where they store the Botox in the meantime, because it is a drug that is stolen a lot. It is a very expensive drug that people like to steal. I know this from my doctor. They've had problems at their own clinic, like a proper doctor. I didn't mean that in a negative way for whoever's going to be doing this there, but... Yes, I'm sorry, I said that and I regret it, I apologize. Yes, I apologize. That was uncalled for on my part, I apologize. But it is an expensive drug that people love to steal. So what kind of guarantee are we going to have where you're going to be doing this in a way that's going to prevent people breaking in right next to my house very frequently trying to steal your medication?
Okay. If you need to talk to the planning commission, let's not get all this...
Sorry, I apologize. I've never done this before. I don't know, I don't know if you can tell, but those are my main concerns. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yeah, so I, you know...
You've got somebody else, Rick?
Oh, sure, sure.
Well, I represent the neighbors to the south and to the east, as opposed to the north and west. And we discussed it, and actually were fine with the idea of a clinic coming in. I worked at the School of Medicine, I'm also familiar with Botox and these sort of clinics usually, you know, overseen by somebody in dermatology or a nurse practitioner or something like that. But our concern was the same thing, was parking. And I think that the way that you need to perceive this sort of, is that the southern neighborhoods of Center Street, because of that gradient he mentioned, can't have driveways. We don't have driveways or garages because we're on raised lots. So the street parking on 7th Street is extremely valuable territory to us, and the corners can't be unmade as no parking because it's a visibility issue. There are stop signs coming in from Minchell, and there's no stop signs on 7th. So I cannot even start to describe the number of T-bones I've seen on that intersection. I would actually, if I could, I would also say, can we also put a cross-traffic-does-not-stop sign up there? Because that has been a real thing. But all we wanted to suggest was if there could be some sort of signage or suggestions that were made that parking on the north side of Minchell, that would be okay with us. Because I always have to park on Minchell and on the south side, and there are a couple of us that do, but there's very rarely parking on the north side of Minchell, and I think that that could accommodate four or five cars fairly easily. So that was, if there's parking in the back, that would probably be fine, but, yeah, it just, just to make sure that people know which areas would be best to park in, maybe would be okay. Ellen Iroh.
Ellen Iroh.
Yes, oh, and also, I'm going to also say that, so it was perhaps a blighted neighborhood five, six years ago, but the, even if you look at the property values for that section of Center Street, the turnover in residents and the change from rentals back to a single-owner family properties has been huge. It's really been greatly improved, that set of maybe four or five blocks. Thank you.
All right. Okay, is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition? Thank you. Where you're at?
Just real quick, I want to thank Ellen for coming up here, because I had time to count to 85, because I was going to mention this gentleman's comment about, at least there are good people coming. And that just, the fact that he said that out loud is bothersome. The reality is, parking, they're handling their off-street, they're going to have plenty of parking, off-street parking. So as far as coming into this neighborhood, they're not going to be, it's not going to be a negative effect on the parking. In reality, a family can move in today with six teenagers that all drive, and all of a sudden you have eight cars parked on the street, and there's nothing they can do to stop. They're fortunate in this situation that you have someone coming in who's already, as stated by this gentleman, is making improvements and is trying to make it better, and in the same time, bringing in something that's not going to create a traffic issue, it's not going to create a noise issue, it's not going to create a population, it's going to be a good neighbor. To address his comments about the deteriorating, again, I said from the very beginning, the last thing I'm going to do is go down the rabbit hole of discussing deteriorating neighborhood, but I think the fact that he said, and I quote, "redone," he said that in two sentences, tells you that there was a problem, that you've got to go in and redo houses, that there was a deterioration, and they had to redo them. So I believe he helped me reach the hurdle of the hardship. And I believe we've also discussed in exhaustion, the parking issue, which I, with a little more time, I would have gone and met with the city engineer to discuss this, and it is on my plan for tomorrow. So tomorrow night, City Councilman, hopefully I'll have a good response to that, to the parking. Parking, I'm not even going to call it an issue, the parking matter. So again, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Grimes Investments LLC, the petitioner this evening. They're simply asking for a favorable recommendation moved forward to the City Council for this to be rezoned from R1 to R1 Plan Development. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Brett?
Go ahead.
I would like to ask Jared, if we should table this, for the sheer reason, if they're saying they're going to build parking lots, parking spaces, why wouldn't that change the city engineers and your outlook on the property? If that's, I just have a real tough time voting for something that has two different parts of our government that have said, "No." I mean, I just don't do that. I'm the kind of guy that says, "We pay you to do that, the city engineer said no, you said no, they said there's a parking problem." Richard, Mr. Shagley, do you need to refile something with the city engineer to where they get it, they give you an okay, or with Jared or something? Because something's wrong, that if they're saying that they're going to tear out the whole backside and put a parking lot there, and it's not in the document that you filed with them.
It was, we, you know, like I also said earlier, you know, the site plan wasn't, it could have been more to really clearly show that. There's been some other things come out of the city engineer's office that we've had to discuss, that, your comment about if we're paying them, we're paying the area plan office, and they're paying the city engineer's office to make these decisions, and why are we even here? We're here because we allow public comment, including the petitioner, to speak, which then sometimes brings out additional information that maybe, and it happens often, that, not often, it happens, that the staff report gives unfavorable, but this commission, after hearing comments from both sides, makes a favorable recommendation. If we're just simply going to follow the area plan office, why am I here? But our code says you have a public hearing to allow for the additional information, and gives us some time together.
To answer your questions, yes, our recommendation would change, and I feel the cities will as well.
I think we should table it and bring it back next month, and when they've had a chance to look at it.
My suggestion would be, if you would like to go down that route, an option would be to disapprove the variance for parking, but forward it on with a favorable recommendation, accept that.
That was what I was going to suggest and ask you if that would be okay?
Yeah.
If we moved for a favorable recommendation and you scratched the variance request for the parking, for the parking.
Yeah, let me just check.
Because it seems to be the major.
Well, and the major concern is the fact that an opinion is given that doesn't make any sense from the city engineer's office. And I wish Marcus was here.
What he says as you're requesting two variances, one for the zero setbacks, which nobody seems to have an issue with, the other is for no requirement beyond the existing parking. If you scratched that, I'd be willing to move for a favorable recommendation.
Yeah, I'm good with that, because we're going to do off-street parking, which satisfies that.
That's what it sounded like. So I move a favorable recommendation with that, or if you request a branch.
Okay. I didn't ask. You don't get to do this yet.
We can do it, just go on that dial.
Okay. That would be the same thing, but a different way.
Sounds better for us.
I just want to make a comment, and we do have a motion, second amendment, and we will honor that, but I just want to make this comment that, you know, this commission is in place for you to use your experiences as members, common sense, your wisdom to really say, does this kind of make sense? And that is, doesn't mean of your nose, or people that are hired to do what they do, but what they're hired to do is to follow the ordinance. Our place is to look at it and say, does that, are we in an area here that doesn't quite fit any time, right? Does it make sense? And I want to make, you know, the thing that keeps rolling across my mind, because I spent 21 years on South Center Street, and I lived a half a block from St. Anthony Cusse, and it had virtually no parking, had a doctor's parking lot, everything else that I remember. You would park on the street someplace to go see some, and five stories and three wings, plus all the outpatient wards and everything else. In addition to that, you had, there were five doctors' offices in the area, they were all just paper doctors. They had patients going in and out, they parked on street, and some cases when patients weren't there, it was the doctor in the space. And what I... And I, what I keep rolling through my mind is, is this gonna be such an adverse impact in this neighborhood? Just can't park with it, just in a problem. Because, you know, a part of our job is to look at a person's right to their property and their right to use it, like, and that comes with a lot of responsibility. And uh, you know, I'm not a person that's in favor of Big Brother, just with iron fist going, no, you can't, no, you can't do that. I mean, I take it very seriously when I make a decision or whatever I do. And I, I know all of you do too. And uh, uh, you know, we both lived in the same neighborhood at a time that your experience never complied because you lived down in Catford Street where you didn't have any St. Anthony Hospital right next door, but you came to figure it out, you know? And um, um, you know, we had ambulances coming down the street, coming in and out. Our department right on the corner, zoom, in and out, they. I'm having a hard time seeing where this would just be so basic that it would just create a problem. So I, I absolutely. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I'll allow, but we got a motion in a second.
Real quick. Okay, so uh, two things. One, I'm not, I'm in favor of this, but my concern was parking and safety. That's it. I think it's a great idea and to be clear, you said, you said a current, you said it's a declining, you know, it's, it's getting worse and it's not getting worse. It was worse and it's getting better, but that's not the point. The point is, I think it's a good idea. I just wanna make sure, like they were talking about, if you get the parking thing sorted, I think most of the neighbors are gonna be cool with it. It's gonna be nice to have a nice neighbors next door. It's gonna be nice. We're fine with it. We just don't want parking to be a tremendous issue. They get that cleared up, I believe what they've said about taking care of the safety aspect, you get the parking cleared up, everybody around there's gonna be super fine with it. So just, that's it. That's all I had to say.
I'm gonna redirect and say that I understand your safety aspect because my father was a physician. At that period of time, most physicians dispensed drugs, lots of heavy-duty drugs, okay? And I realize we live in a different time and my father's office was over on Third Street, you know, towards the end of his practice he was broken into. These are things that kinda happen in society. It's called illegal things and we have laws for it, we have police for it. I don't think we can build an absolute complete utopia in a bubble. I wish we could. I really think this is not gonna adversely impact your community to, to speak of. And at the end of the day, um, you know, you're protected. I'm just gonna give you my reasoning and my thought pattern. And at the end of the day, if they're gone, it's back to our world. They have covered the base of it's back, it's gonna be residential things, it's not gonna just morph itself into something else and something else and something else. So I, I just wanna make clear my thinking, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor, I.
Thank you very much.
Next item, document number sixty-four, special ordinance twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, twelve forty-two, North Thirteenth Street, Terre Haute, Indiana, from an M-one to an R-one, single-family residence district.
Property owners are Bernard and Nancy Ferris. Proposed use, single-family residence, proposed zoning, R-one, single-family residence district, current zoning, M-one, light industrial district. Property is located at twelve forty-two, North Thirteenth Street. The neighborhood enhancement area is M-one to the north, R-two to the east, M-one to the south and west. The petitioners are requesting to rezone the property from M-one, light industrial district to R-one, single-family residence district. Several homes around the area are zoned M-one despite being single-family homes. The property has only been utilized as a single-family home. According to the assessed records, it was built in eighteen fifty. The petitioners requesting to rezone in order to be able to sell the property before continued use as a single-family residence. And we had also discussed the industrial, non-industrial approachment, industrial parks in a previous rezoning. Um, in an M-one zoning district, all storage except of motor vehicles shall be within completely enclosed buildings or may be located out of doors if it is effectively screened by a solid wall or fence. The adjoining M-one property to the west does not meet this requirement. Based upon the precedence that was set by document number thirteen, special ordinance number one sixteen, implying that the developer slash owner of the requested rezoning would incur the hardship, staff offers a favorable recommendation, but the following conditions, the petitioner must submit a statement relating rights to the required bumper yard and ongoing use must be attached to the de-title or legal description and remain with the property.
Okay, is the petitioner present?
Um, I'm Michelle Tucker. I'm actually the realtor representing um, the owners of the property. Um, we do have it for sale and do have an accepted purchase agreement. Um, the buyer is not able to move forward because of the zoning as it is. Um, FHA will not allow that zoning type to continue for him to be able to live in the home. So we're hoping we can get that changed to R-one so we can um, continue to use that as a single-family dwelling.
Any questions for the planning commission? Anyone speaking in opposition? Have a motion.
I'd move for a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Favorited. Motion passes.
I like how I provoked you to get you up here.
Okay, the next item is under subdivision, major primary, secondary, document number fifty-seven, file twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two, Lmer, House seven.
Lamar, yes. The property has frontage along East Lambert Avenue and has a common address of four six nine nine East Lambert, two new lots totaling seven point five, oh five five acres. The surveyor's, Mr. Barnes. The applicant is requesting subdivide seventy point oh five five acres, creating two new lots, a variance of scale has been requested. Uh, health department has approved, public sewer is not available, septic systems must be utilized, public water is not available, it's not in the flood zone, the lot exceeds the minimum lot size requirements. East Lambert Avenue is a secondary collector level roadway. Of course, stormwater drainage would not be required with, and this, I think it should have been under minor subdivisions, this is saying, would be categorized as a minor subdivision. Uh, the petitioner has requested the creation of two lots with intended use of single-family homes. Lot two already has a home constructed and will be two point one six acres. Proposed lot one is currently aggravant and will be approximately six, seven point eight nine five acres in size. Uh, the request is accompanied by a variance, request for a variance of scale. The surveyor tests that all the planted information appears to be legible at the scale set on the plat. Staff has no issues with the variance request and no with concern with the lots supplied. Uh, approval of the plot contingent bond, it being recorded in ninety days, and we do offer a favorable recommendation with approval of the variance request.
Okay, is the petitioner present? Are you Mr. Lamar?
Yeah, no, I'm Lamar's, uh, Tiffany Lamar's husband. She's, she's working.
I apologize for.
No, it's all right. No, it's all right.
They don't look like Tiffany.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we just wanna build another home. We bought this lot, I mean, we bought this property in two thousand nineteen for our emotes with the intention of building another house. That's all we wanna do. So we just wanna survey another property and build a house for our home that might stand right there, so that's it. That's all we wanna do. Nothing else.
Any questions? Anyone speaking in opposition? Motion.
Motion for approval.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is document number sixty-three, UZ thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, eight fifty-five, West Spring Hill Drive, Terre Haute, Indiana, from C-seven to an M-two, heavy industrial district.
The property owners are the Thompsons and the proposed use is a wrecker service. It is currently C-seven, proposed zoning M-two. As we know, the property is located at eight fifty-five West Spring Hill Drive. Development priority along this area is low. Access to the site will be along West Spring Hill Drive. Surrounding uses to the north is M-one, south and west have A-one, west also has C-seven, east also a C-seven. Now, Spring Hill Drive corridors are scattered with a mix of uses. The petitioner has requested rezoning to allow for a towing company to operate at that location. Business has already placed a sign and moved equipment to that location. Automobile wrecking and salvage is permitted use by right in the M-two. M-one permits by right a wrecker service. C-seven contains many permitted uses that coincide with vehicular storage and repair. Most towing companies do not, do not offer vehicle repair, whether they'll tow vehicles to a repair shop or store them outdoors until they are scrapped or sold for salvage. Thus, someone wanting to operate a new towing company will eventually follow down a path leading to an M-two. No additional buffering will be needed as all surrounding uses are either commercial or agricultural. Public use areas will need to be hard-surfaced or relief from the board zoning appeals must be given. Property is also in a FEMA identified special flood hazard area. The existing structure was built before the first flood insurance rates mapped for Vigo County and any renovations of the existing structure may require the structure to comply with current flood hazard ordinance standards. Any new construction must comply with the flood hazard ordinance for Vigo County. We offer a favorable recommendation with hard surfacing of all public areas or relief from board zoning appeals.
Hello.
I guess the petitioner's here.
Yeah. They're all on the left.
Uh, when we leased this business, or not the business, when we leased the property, we were under the impression that it was already zoned properly because Larry Lambert was next door, you have Sir Thomas next door, it's all commercial property. So um, we, Strain Logistics, my husband's name is Jake, I'm Jessica. We've actually been in business for more than a year, so we took, when we moved in here, we had big intentions. I mean, we, we're not just feeding ourselves, we have employees, we have three drivers. So we would like to continue operating so that way we can keep in, um, providing services for our community because a lot of towing companies out there, well, they're not out for the people, they're out for themselves. And like he mentioned, we do um, work on vehicles, so I don't know, we just would like to keep helping our community members. We're from a small town of Prairie Creek and we just wanna bring that small town to a bigger pond and give everybody that hospitality feel.
Okay, any questions? Uh, there is no one here. Speaking in opposition unless it's.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
The anonymous tipper is not here.
Okay, any, any questions though?
No, but I don't wanna vote on it, okay? Because I'm a wrecker service, I don't wanna vote on it.
She wants to abstain?
Yep.
I'm gonna restrain because I have a wrecker service, I'll restrain. No, just a site vote, not a, is there eight or seven?
Oh, I mean, two.
Seven.
Do you need eight for a forum? Vote on it.
Yeah, I just don't wanna vote on it since I'm a wrecker service and we're the same competition.
Okay, here's what's going on, they've got this big question in your mind, it takes eight people for a quorum, she runs a wrecker service, associate abstaining, so there's no sense of bias going.
She runs a wrecker service?
Yes.
You don't know who I am, do you?
No.
Mikes?
Oh, okay.
I say, I know who you are.
Everybody knows who we are now.
Everybody knows who I am usually, but yeah. But I just wanna sustain because we have a wrecker service, so.
So you're saying I can't fulfill my dreams because someone else's competition?
I'm saying we've gotta get to a forum point.
Oh, I don't know what that means.
I mean, we need eight people to be able to vote.
Okay.
We've only got seven that can vote because she's abstaining.
Oh, abstaining, so she's not in the vote?
Well, let move on.
Right, I'm not in the vote.
Okay, okay. I thought you were voting against us. That's not fair.
I just don't wanna vote.
We can't act on it.
We can't act, yeah.
It would be up to the commissioners to decide that they don't wanna have to listen to whatever, or just to act on it without your advice.
But it can still go to the commissioners. Just because we didn't act on it doesn't.
Right.
We're not wanting to be a record, uh, auto wrecking place, just throwing that out there. We just wanna tow vehicles and help people. That's all I wanna do.
We don't have enough people to vote.
I know, I was just saying.
Right, yeah.
So now what are we doing?
Just so it's clear to you, this is gonna go on to the commissioners because they have the final vote. It's just not going with any action on our part.
Okay, so what?
They just don't recommend yes or no.
What do we need to do now?
Just go to the commissioners.
Yeah, go commissioners.
Go to the commissioners meeting.
Same thing you would've done even if we'd have done.
So I just get with you? Right, so she, I mean, you have to go commissioners anyway, so yes.
Commissioners will be notified if there wasn't a forum, so it won't look like it was any negative.
Right, yeah, it won't be negative, right. Okay. At first I thought you were saying you were voting against us. No, I'm not, I'm not doing anything. Okay. So.
Okay.
What do I need to do now? When I leave here?
Go to the commissioners meeting next week. Okay.
Seven in the morning and ask her when the committee meeting is.
Okay.
Why did they move their meeting around? Basically after ours?
No. Yeah, but when they switched to bi-weekly, it threw it all off, so now sometimes there's two weeks between hours and then.
I was trying to.
Okay, I'll just call her in the morning.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
You're not any worse off than you were when you got here. You're, you're at the same spot.
Okay, I was worried for, not gonna lie, I was worried.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
Okay.
We're done.
Good, thank you.
I just don't want somebody thinking I voted not because of who I was. Exactly. You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
I know how that goes.
Anything else?
Other people were abstaining.
I'm looking to turn some of them. Favorited. Any opposed? Turn.
Yeah, I didn't know how that works, but I just, I've heard of it, I'm gonna restrain, so we have, we'll do that.